To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. We'll open the meeting with public comment. Is there any public comments?
Good morning. I guess the only thing I'm gonna do is just maybe take a moment to observe a moment of silence for Deputy Sheriff Jake Gomdian. He was killed on duty in an accident Saturday night, and I think that we can all appreciate the heartache that our fellow brothers and sisters of Galveston County, county government, are feeling today. So if we could, just reserve a couple of moments in his name. Thank you.
Along with that, so you know, the commission will send a letter to the county commissioners and express our sympathies for them and the law enforcement community down in Arizona.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning. Julie Lethardt, Broadwater County citizen and taxpayer. I have a question for the commission and Corey Swanson. When Sean Rowland was hired by this county under contract on March 11th of 2019, the county attorney cited Montana Code Annotated 752031, "Competitive advertised bidding required for certain large purchase or construction contracts." I would like to know how a contract with an environmental health professional to do for contracted services falls under that particular exemption or that Montana Code annotated, because it states, "Competitive advertised bidding required for certain large purchases or construction contracts, except as provided in 752304 and Title 18, Chapter 2, Part 5. A contract for the purchase of any vehicle, road machinery, or other machinery, apparatus, appliances, equipment, or materials or supplies for construction, repair, or maintenance in excess of $80,000 may not be entered into by a county governing body without first publishing a notice calling for bids." Subject to 752309 and as accepted as provided in Title 18, Chapter 2, Part 5, every contract subject to bidding must be let to the lowest responsible bidder. So how does hiring a contract sanitarian fall under that? Why wasn't it let out for bid? When I hired somebody to work for the county under contract, I had to go out for a bid, and that was for $5,000. It could not exceed $5,000. But this does not apply to a person. It says, "Construction, equipment, vehicle, road machinery." So I'd just like an answer to that.
Well, I don't remember specifically giving that...
It's in the video.
Okay, well, let me finish my answer.
Okay.
If I don't remember specifically giving that advice, I believe what I said was, there's a competitive bidding requirement. And then later in the meeting, I went and looked at the statute, and later in the meeting, I came back and said that I didn't see that it applied to a personnel contract. So that's my recollection without having watched the video.
Okay.
By plain language of the statute, I don't think it does apply to... That particular bidding requirement doesn't apply to personnel. However, there are many times when you certainly can. There's nothing that prohibits a county from doing an RFP for a contract.
Right.
I know when we did a... We were working with the city to do a city attorney contract. That's what we did.
And was it a request for proposal, or was it you just hired?
I believe it was a request for proposal, but yeah, it was a request for a proposal, and then they interviewed people.
Okay.
So, but again, that statute you read, you're correct. I don't believe it applies to a personnel contract.
So where does the $80,000, they can hire him up to $80,000 come in then?
Well, the... My experience with the up to $80,000 requirement for a contract in which there's bidding is generally the acquisition, construction, et cetera, of materials.
Right. So how did they hire a contract person without going out for bid?
Because that statute doesn't... That statute requires bidding if it's over $80,000.
Right, but it doesn't apply to people, services?
Yeah, so they don't have to go out for competitive bid to do a contract.
Okay. It says exemption for competitive bidding, you know, talks about in this 752304, "Purchases that in the opinion of the governing body are made necessary by fire, flood, explosion, storm, earthquake, or other elements for the immediate preservation of order or the public health, or for the restoration of condition of usefulness that has been destroyed by accident, wear, tear, mischief, or for the relief-stricken community overtaken by calamity." So wherein here, it's my understanding that under contracts, you have to go out for a bid, and you have to get the lowest contract, the lowest... You have to take the lowest bid unless for some reason you find that that particular person is incompetent or has other issues. So why wasn't the physician advertised either for a county employee or for the bid process?
Again, the beginning of that statute doesn't apply. That statute doesn't apply.
Right, I understand. But why was it brought up then? And why are these folks saying that they can keep him hired up to $80,000?
Okay, I'm trying to answer your question. The statute says for certain acquisitions, you have to have competitive bidding. A personnel services contract is not among those that require competitive bidding.
Are you sure of that?
Under that statute.
Disregard that statute. What statute did you use that they didn't have to go out for bid? Because that's the one you cited.
No, but I'm telling you, later in the meeting, I went back and looked at the statute and said it doesn't apply.
Well, I would like to know why that it wasn't, didn't go out in the bid process to hire somebody, because the county is paying $90 an hour, and in the last meeting, I see that Sean is going to have an employee of his do the inspections of license establishment. It did not mention, however, whether that person was a registered sanitarian or not. I would like to know the name of the person, and they're a registered sanitarian or a sanitarian in training. Maybe that was discussed at the Board of Health meeting. I don't know, but that's a requirement, because under Montana Code Annotated, it does state that a sanitarian with the meaning, is shall mean a person who by reasons of the person's special knowledge of the physical, biological, and chemical sciences, and the principles and method of public health acquired by professional education and practical experience through inspectional, educational, or enforcement duties, is qualified to practice the profession of a sanitarian, and the definition of the practice of a professional, the practice of the profession of sanitarian means, giving advice on or enforcing compliance with state and local regulations applicable to local government jurisdictions and programs concerning food service, food processing, public accommodation, trailer courts, campgrounds, daycare centers, schools, swimming pools, and spas, air pollution, solid and hazardous waste collection and disposal, sewage treatment and disposal, vector control, underground storage tanks, drinking water, land subdivision, and milk sanitation. So I would like reassurance that the person that's going to be conducting these inspections is not just an employee of Sean's, that they are a registered sanitarian, otherwise he is in violation of the law, and I will file a complaint with the Board of Sanitarians. And one more comment. When I call in to the sanitarian's office, it says, "I'm out of the office. If you have any environmental health questions or concerns, please contact Nicole Brown," and it provides her number. She is not a registered sanitarian, and she is legally not able to answer questions or address concerns that are supposed to be addressed by a sanitarian. So I suggest you change that, or I'll file a complaint that she is practicing the profession of sanitarian without a license.
Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. I just want to bring up the fact that you guys are participating in the Capital 360 Initiative that's in Lewis and Clark County, and that is money that's used for mitigations. So they have, or they are setting up a charter for members, and the vision of this is to lead and work together in the Capital 360 area to enhance safe and effective wildfire response, protect human populations, and foster community infrastructure to withstand wildfires. The mission is to work together effectively, implement the three tenets of the National Cohesive Wildland Fire Management Strategy across public and private lands in the Capital 360 area, which we are a part of through the Tri-County Park. They are setting up roles and responsibilities, Agency Administrative Committee, and that is what we are members of. So we need to have a representative that can come to these meetings. I'm a representative for the fire district and also for Tri-County, so if we could get somebody that can, from the county, from you guys, that can represent the county on that. Being part of the committee is just a voting process for making decisions on some of how the money is spent in the Tri-County area, and the committee is supposed to meet at least twice annually, is what they're proposing right now. So it won't be a big deal as far as meetings go. But I just want to let you guys know, I will leave this stuff here. It is the charter for the initiative and describes what's going on, has maps and stuff here of the area that we cover. So just want to let you have this.
Thanks, Ed.
Dave, is that just in non-urban areas, or does it include urban interfaces?
Includes urban interfaces also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Dwayne?
Dwayne Holm. I am totally disgusted with your dump situation. I took two new tires up there Saturday and was gonna send them to the free pile so somebody could have them. They said, "We want $2 a tire." Now, that ain't right. And if they think it is, I think it's time we fire Mary and get somebody in here that knows what they're doing. Then the second thing is I am under the impression that there is meetings held at the dinner out deal over here, Senior Senate Center, for head, heads of departments, and it is not advertised. Why isn't it? And why isn't the public in on it? Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll talk about part of that. I mean, the meetings that we do have, we have once a month over there. They include all our elected officials and department heads, and we give agency reports to one another of things that are going on and try to find out ways that we can help one another. That's all we discuss there. I mean, it's something that I was involved in.
Why isn't it advertised?
Well, I guess they didn't realize something like that should be advertised. I don't know. What do you think, Corey?
Every time there's a meeting, it's supposed to be advertised.
I actually thought we weren't advertising them, so I haven't really paid attention to them. I haven't, I've missed most of them probably. I'm in the link. Sorry about that.
Yeah, they were stock, so I guess we can advertise them.
If there's two or more commissioners present, we could have to...
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Go to our 10:15. Corey Swanson County Attorney Resolution Requesting Prosecutor Assistance in District Case TK 2009-0755. Whereas the Broadwater County Attorney has requested prosecutorial assistance in certain causes in First Judicial District Court, Broadwater County and/or Broadwater Justice Court is deemed necessary, and whereas it is desired and deemed appropriate that a special deputy county attorney be appointed to assist in the prosecution of the aforementioned cases, and whereas Montana Code Annotated 742715 authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to employ special county counsel to assist in the prosecution of any such criminal case pending in the county or request of the county attorney, and whereas the Broadwater County Attorney has requested that a special deputy county attorney be appointed to prosecute cases pending in the First Judicial District Court, Broadwater County and/or Broadwater County Justice Court, and whereas Peter Simon, Townsley City Attorney, has agreed to act as a special deputy Broadwater County Attorney in pending cases, TK 2019-0755, therefore it is hereby resolved that the Townsley City Attorney, Peter Simon, shall be appointed as special deputy county attorney for Broadwater County for the purpose of assisting in the prosecution of the pending cases that he can fulfill the functions set out in Montana Code Annotated 444103. It is further resolved that under the terms of this agreement, no fee will be charged for attorney time provided by the special prosecutor of these cases. Mileage will be paid at the current rate of 56 cents per mile. Witness fees and expenses, jury costs, and other normal costs associated with the trial will be accounted responsibilities as with all other prosecutions. Is there a motion to approve said resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the authorization of prosecutorial assistance for case TK 2019-0755.
I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion?
So it's a justice court case. It's just a misdemeanor criminal case. I have a conflict with the people involved. It's just a personal conflict, and so I've asked Peter Simon to do the case, and he's agreed to do so.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote same. Motion carries. Our 10:20. Teresa Munson, Public Health, Humana, and Medicare Billing. Discuss alternate billing company.
Good morning, Teresa Munson, Public Health. So about a year ago or so, some of you might remember that Blue Cross Blue Shield Medicare Advantage was the Advantage Plan to Medicare. They pulled out of our county pretty fast and left people 65 and over or of Medicare age very little time to choose a supplement. So Humana came in, and they were able to provide a few plans for folks to sign up for that were pretty reasonable. Some of the folks went to an agent. They found out all the facts and figures. Some bought theirs online because they ran out of time, and they had to get a supplement. With regular Medicare, you pretty much have to have a supplement if you're hospitalized. Otherwise, you're gonna pay 20% of your bill. So anyway, there was only a few plans to choose from. Now, there is like 15 plans, and they all have different verbiage. They all pay for different things. And what we found out during last year's billing process was that some of the cheaper plans don't pay for flu and pneumonia. There was no way that we could know that at the time, and a lot of people didn't read the fine print in their policies. So what ended up happening is, after about a year of solid arguing with Humana, some of them we didn't get paid, and we felt like it wasn't the consumer's fault necessarily, although they are responsible for knowing their policy, but at the time, we didn't know, so we couldn't even give them advice. So we ended up writing off some, according to our accountant, not near as many as been written off with my predecessors, but there is another company that we can sign up with. It's called TransactRx, and this is a Part D company right now that we use for shingrix, because it's so expensive. We need to make sure that somebody comes in for that shingle shot that, you know, it's 175 bucks, so we need to make sure that we're gonna get paid for that somehow, right? So we can sign up for that part free, but to sign up to do flu and pneumonia, it's a little bit different thing. But within 30 seconds, we can find out if that, and it's any policy, not just Humana, any policy will pay for their flu and pneumonia shot, and if not, how much the consumer has to pay, and how much will be reimbursed. I mean, it takes 30 seconds. Name, date of birth, and last four of their social, and we know right then and there with the click of a button what's gonna happen. So right now, we're taking people's cards, and we're just hoping that we know the plans well enough that they're gonna get paid. And as I keep researching new plans, I mean, seriously, guys, they have like DEF, F and H, and I mean, there's so many. And the fine print says, "You may not be able to go to, you know, here or there to get your flu shot. You may have to go to your doctor or have a referral," and our term is other provider. People don't know what other provider means. Well, that's public health. That's other specialties. I just talked to a gentleman this morning who said he just switched insurance plans because he went to his doctor, and they said, "Oh, by the way, this isn't gonna be covered by your insurance." So as much as we wrote off last year, that wasn't bad. I mean, that was under $700, but the amount of time I spent on the phone, I can tell you, was five times that, at least, at my wages, trying to get these claims paid. Well, we just as well wrote them off. But I had to learn. Diane's doing most of the other, just normal billing that goes through Blue Cross Blue Shield, Allegiance, all that stuff, you know, and she knows that, and she's getting through. The problem ones are the ones I have to deal with, and I probably spend three to five hours a week, and that's been solid since last fall. Just arguing with them, they'll pay one claim, and then they won't pay another claim. Exactly the same claim, exactly the same plan. So with this new system, we literally, in 30 seconds, we can take their card, find out what it's gonna pay, and, you know, I have the money in my budget for it, and, you know, it's gonna eliminate a lot of write-off and a lot of consumer confusion, because they think, even though it's their responsibility to know their policy, if we give them a flu shot and we say, "Oh, your insurance didn't pay," we're still the bad guy. You know, that's just life. We're still the bad guy. So we asked a lot of them, sent a nice letter, asked them if they would just pay the price of the vaccine so we could be reimbursed that, the money that we have out, and we had three out of 15 come in and pay. So I'm just asking, you know, that at least that we can try this. It's possible that we may be able to get rid of one or the other, but for this year, I think that we're gonna need just to have that duplicate billing company and see how that goes.
All right. So Teresa, this, is it Transact?
TransactRx.
That's what you're looking for?
Yes.
So if they say, you call them up and you get the approval 30 seconds later, like you're saying, is that something you can hang your hat on?
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
Okay.
We have had no trouble with our shingrix, you know, and that has just, I mean, that has been a great thing for our department, the shingrix thing. They say the patient has to pay $47. We collect that right then and there, and they reimburse, they tell us what they're gonna reimburse us, and it's very fair, and we get the check every month. And they group them, so that's kinda nice, too. They just send us one check with everybody's name that they paid and how much they paid, and it's been spot-on, so.
Does that affect any of your clients' insurances at all, other than...
It will, yeah. I've been in contact with them. I've already sent them all of our companies that we bill with, and we can use it for anybody. But right now, the main people we're having trouble with is Humana. But we can use it for any company, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Allegiance, all the big, United, all the big ones. We can do the same thing with them. It's pretty much...
So the folks around Humana right now, if they come in and you do this, they'll know right there that it's either gonna cover it or not?
Yep, we will.
So they'll know the impact at that time?
They will. So our other, the company that we currently have is Availity, and it's a good company, but it doesn't have, it doesn't give us that capability. That one's $9.48 a year, and we've been using that forever. And so the Transact is, the startup fee is $5.75. That's what's, you know, but they do a lot of research for you. They go in and they check every company that you're associated with and make sure that you're within their network and all that stuff. So they do do a lot of work for that. And then it's only $3.75 a year. So, you know, it's possible that, you know, maybe we could have one or the other once we... But if Humana keeps adding policies to their Advantage Plans, you know, I can't possibly go in and read every single policy.
Well, it sounds like, you know, the amount of time that you save personally, plus the amount that you've had written off, that this probably will benefit to you and to the people that you serve.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, for me, it's about the consumer, too, because they get frustrated. You know, we say, you know, "It used to be Medicare paid for flu and pneumonia, no questions asked, and now you have to have a, an Advantage Plan." So Medicare is out of the picture for flu and pneumonia. And so, you know, I just don't like telling those people that, "Hey, I'm sorry, we can't, we can't give you your flu shot because you have an HMO plan, or you have this plan, and it doesn't cover flu shots at the Health Department. You have to go to your doctor." Well, some of our doctors in town, number one, didn't have flu vaccine this year, and number two, don't give it. So we are the big provider of flu vaccines in Broadwater County at this time, and so if the provider's name is on their card, and they go to their provider and say, "Well, I can't get it at the Health Department. I have to get it from you," and they don't have flu vaccine, then what? They don't get a flu shot unless they pay privately. That's not fair.
Do most of them, if they go to the doctor, and the doctor doesn't have the flu, can they come, they still can't come to you on a referral? They can only get it from the doctor?
They can come to us on a referral, but the process is then that we have to send it through Medicaid or Medicare, get it denied, then we have to print off this form. It's called a CMS 1500, and we have to drop it to paper, and we have to send the referral, the CMS 1500, to Medicare or to the policy and get it paid, and then it, sometimes the turnaround time's six months. So it's, and there, there is just a lot more of my time that I don't have. And we did find out last year that they won't do a referral. It's illegal, and they won't do a referral after the fact, so. It's insurance. It's not fun stuff, that's for sure.
Bye. Sorry, you're looking from us just to give you the okay to... Is this, is this a, an annual contract or whatever that you do with Transact or?
You, you can back out at any time. I think, I think it's ninety days. You give them ninety days with notice if you want to terminate your contract.
Okay.
So, yep.
So is there a motion then, too?
Sure, I guess I will make a motion to allow Teresa Monson, public health nurse, to contract with TransactRx.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let us know how that works, Teresa.
Going to ten thirty?
Let us know how that goes, will you, please? Kind of follow up.
Win Meehan, Melinda Hall, Mental Health Locals, Viagra Council, peer-to-peer program. Anne has a letter she'd like to read from, from Laura Santos.
I'm sorry I cannot be at the meeting to advocate for the peer-to-peer program and propose funding for this request in person. Through this note, I encourage the commission to fund this match. It is proven by data that this program saves money and will eventually pay for itself. But it needs to get off the ground to do that. It has only one year to prove itself, that isn't enough. Detention centers should not be used to treat behavioral health issues. One diversion can potentially save Broadwater County citizens approximately twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty dollars. Long-term, we should work together for sustainability program. For now, I support funding the peer-to-peer program. On Wednesday, October sixteenth, we received word our challenge for PILP back pay was successful. We will be receiving a check for that shortly. It isn't a lot, but should be able to cover the match requested. This use of PILP fits with our practice of using PILP for uncertain, unforeseen and capital expenditures. Thank you, Commissioner Laura Overe.
Perfect, and I appreciate that. That's great. One of the things, obviously, just to give you a little background, I don't know if you're real familiar with it, Mike, or not. Commissioner Overe has been sitting in our meetings. But Melinda came on board in two thousand nineteen here under the Peer-to-Peer Network on a grant. That grant expires on December thirty-first of this year. One of the things we're looking at now is House Bill six sixty. It's a mobile crisis unit grant that legislation set up this, this last session. Those funds don't become available January first. One of the things that we're, we're trying to figure out is we, we put a lot of effort. She's done a lot of work and she's gonna give you some information on that, on what she's doing, some of the stats and, and what the people that she is serving are saying about her. They, they do a survey after each session. So she'll give you that and I'll let her talk about that here in a second. But I, I think it's really important, but exactly what Commissioner Overe said, is that this is a program that can ultimately save the county a ton of money. And we have, the, the time that, that Melinda has helped us at the, in the law enforcement side has probably saved us multiple thousands of dollars just in, in, in the times that we've used her. She has been in our jail, talking to folks in there that has been really beneficial. But then she's also been out with people that are in immediate acute crisis. And we had a gentleman that was suicidal stand out in front of our, our thing. Or was having some sort of crisis. And Melinda just happened to walk up the street and the officer said, hey, come on over. And Melinda took that and she ran with it. And we, as law enforcement, we didn't have to deal with it. And we never had an involuntary commit. We didn't have officers sitting at the hospital waiting for CRT. We didn't have officers driving down the highway, transporting back and forth from Warner Springs for hearings. And the clerk of district court didn't spend thirty-eight hundred dollars to house them for over the weekend at Warner Springs. So just in that one incident, thousands and thousands of dollars were saved. And I think that's important. And so one of the, the other funding mechanism obviously is PILP. But I also, with the cell in the hospital, I, I believe that the, the investment money you guys put in comes back. If I understand it correctly. And I thought, if you're, you're gonna put that into investment, this would be a great program. I think it's important, not only for our community, I think it's important for, for all of us in law enforcement and emergency services. But it's also important for our community to have a place to get out and, and have interaction before it does become a crisis. And, and that's a big thing. So I'll let Melinda give her stuff and then she can kind of tell you what she's doing. And then we'll kind of go from there. Does that sound good to you?
Cool. First of all, I'd like to give you guys, this is for you, public, if you'd like any information. Here we have it and what we are. This is for you, for you. And we also have a Commissioner Overe to put in the box for her. On that, there is all the stats on the clients that I have worked with, their response back. In the last page, it is also the cost of what it has cost to a peer network. Throughout this year, the first four months of it, what I did was spend a lot of time with outreach, getting people to be aware of mental health in this town again. It had been lost. So I spent a lot of time doing that. My boss also, in the month of May, challenged me to do some events for the month of May. We did LAC for the many years that I've been on the LAC committee. It's not been well received. The year before, last year, I think there was only like three or four that attended it. The year before, there really wasn't any at all. So I kind of took this challenge with my boss and I said, okay, we'll do this. Wasn't sure if I could get one done, but I mounted a challenge for two. The first one I did was on May ninth, was the mental health awareness walk. I got the people involved and everything. And I got T-shirts and was able to pass T-shirts out for everybody. Those T-shirts are still on to this day so that we keep awareness of this that's going on in town. The second event I did was May thirty-first. And with also the help of Jennifer Beatty and also other, the community, we did a movie in the park. It was well-attended by three hundred people. The walk, we had close to sixty-two, sixty-three people. So we've got a lot of mental awareness on in town. So then after I did all of that, then it became the work time, having to get people. They were kind of really not receptive of it because of the fact that we've had this many times within a year, it goes down. I have always assured my people that this wasn't gonna happen. I have fulfilled this grant that was supposed to be here and I've done. What I have done also in the past year, I have these packets that I have sent out to. They are in all the hospital here, they're in all the way in the rooms. They are also at the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department has used these packets. We give them to people that are in crisis. And they have all this information on and on where their resources are. Digital things on the, on the computer, on their phones and stuff, or anything that they would like to have for any resources or anything available. I have also put these out in the bathrooms, in the bars and stuff. I was, can never believe that I was gonna put my name in the bar like this. It's been well received, you know, and I have gotten many things. So, and now it's come to the end of this grant and we want to continue forward with it. My opinion of this is that if we do not continue it, the money that I just used with this last grant and it fulfilled would be a waste because then we would not, it would not go forward. We need this to go forward. It's saved a lot of money, as Win has said. I am committed to this wholeheartedly as a consumer of mental health myself and have recovered from, and recovery, I should say. I'm always in recovery from my own, I have my own mental illnesses and I also have my own addictions that I have been recovering from for many years. I have also, in the last week or two, just have gotten more people. They're starting to become more obtuse. Through the sheriff's department, it was two of these people. Within twenty-four hours of the time that this packet was received to them, people, they come to me. If it did not happen, what would happen then is that they go out there, they get a referral and they wait for months. So in between this time, I am there as, to help guide them and stuff, to keep them through, to keep them stable until they can get to a counselor. Sometimes they don't even get to the counselor, they stay right here with me and they continue to move forward. Also through clients that have wanted to and have expressed wanting to do things in this town, wanting meetings and stuff. This town never did have Narcotics Anonymous meetings. We now have two Narcotics Anonymous meetings in this town. I'm also in the process of, we've had many people with suicides. My own son, I've had, lost a suicide in August. So it's been near and dear to my heart. And people have been expressing for grief. They would like to have grief groups. So right now, I'm in the process of ordering a grief group, grief share thing, session. I'm in session six right now to finish it up. And then to, in January, I'm going to present it out to people. We have already kind of did a survey. There have already been four or five wanting to do this. So there's where I'm at right now in this and I will turn it over to whoever.
Well, I'll just kind of go along with some things here. One of the, obviously, we talked about the Narcotics Anonymous, we, with our discussion with Congressman G. N. Cortez. That was with other things, as a coexisting drug addiction or substance abuse along with mental health illness. And, and we know that, that's, that's a major problem. So this is another thing that having the NA classes is really, you know, they're starting to get people, but well-attended. So that's a good thing. Part of this grant is that, the House Bill sixty-one, partly, it's a dollar-for-dollar rule. And so my, my guess, or my, my philosophy, I guess, is we can't guarantee that we're gonna get a grant. It is, it does specify in the language for House Bill six sixty that it goes to rural eight, rural agencies that have things in step. We have a lot of what this mobile crisis grant, we have a lot of that already in place. So a lot of that leg, we're not starting from the ground. We've got the groundwork done, we just need to keep moving forward. And so that's probably, everything we've looked at is probably the best one that fits our needs. But it's a dollar-for-dollar match. And so right now, with, with what, I don't know the numbers that you have. We were just under twenty-two thousand dollars for Melinda's wages, the computers, the internet, the wifi, the office supplies, things of that nature. And then there's a billing component as well of that because the peer-to-peer is actually recognized by Medicaid as something that's reimbursable. And so they have a fairly simple, my understanding, program out there that can be purchased for like twenty-five dollars a month. And it will do your billing for you based upon what's going on. So there's, there's a way for this to come back. There also, we already have a line item for local mental health. And it looks like it's, it's under, it's a two-nine-seven-nine mental health LAC grant. But it's also got, it's got operating supplies, printing, publications and everything else. So we already have it, we have it in the system already, so it's not really doing anything. And I guess one, one, one thing is people go, why is the sheriff up here talking about a grant for mental health? Because no one else wanted to be the parent of it. And, and Melinda reached out to different resources, everybody kind of went, I believe in this program and I believe in what the, what the good work it does. And I'm willing to take it on and be the babysitter of it to, to make sure that we keep it moving forward. And then maybe as it develops and progresses. She does have another person that's interested in being a male peer-to-peer. So that's, that's good. And, and like I've said numerous times, this is kind of where, peer-to-peer is kind of where everybody's going. Department of Corrections, law enforcement, and mental health consumers. Everybody's kind of going to peer-to-peer. If you want to understand what's going on in the room, you do, you want to talk to somebody who's going through the same thing that you are. And that's kind of where, I think that's where we're all going in society. So my request is, is, is if we can at least get a, a commitments to, to, to fund that, that dollar-for-dollar, because all we're gonna ask for is it's a two, you can get a one-year, two-year grant, is that we could get, commence that. If we get the grant, we got the, the back, the backend on the other side. If it doesn't get the grant, I would ask that we still get twenty-two thousand and keep it going until we can find another funding mechanism through the next, the next calendar year. Because I, like Melinda said, I don't want to see this go away. It saves us a lot of time and effort. My guys do not spend hardly any time sitting at St. Pete's anymore. We spend less time on the road to Warner Springs. We spend less time in mental health hearings up at, up in Helena. And so for us, having Melinda there has been a, a great asset. And I don't want to see it go away, so.
All right, so where are we at in the grant process right now?
Well, so one of the things, we, we, I didn't want to, we have Dan, I can't remember Dan's last name.
A U N E.
He, he said he will write the grant for free. So he said, I'll write it up, no problem. But I didn't want to have him write it up if I didn't have some sort of commitments on the back end. Doesn't do me good to receive a grant if I ain't got nothing on the backside. To say, yeah, we got a dollar-for-dollar. So that's kind of what we were looking at. Okay. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
Sure. So. Melinda, did you, did you use the reimbursement portion of this last year at all?
No, the grant that I was under, because we wanted to get it out there and known and stuff, they were allowed to have their services this year free of charge.
Okay.
And they all know that this is coming down the pike. I am in a transition that will be reimbursed or that eventually will cease.
Over, that hasn't been tested yet?
No.
Okay.
So speaking with, we had a meeting, Teresa and Laura Santos from over at the hospital. Melinda and I had a meeting this last week on Thursday. And, and it sounds like the reimbursable cost is about forty dollars an hour. And her sessions last anywhere from an hour to thirty, or three hours. And so, you know, there's a couple of things, you know, like I know that the office back here is used currently by the Center for Mental Health once a month or whatever. We would need to find a spot where she can store some paperwork and, and things of that nature. But there's some in-kind stuff as well. But it's, at the end of the day, there's some things I can take care of and there's some things I can't. But that's kind of where we're at.
So do you, do you go into the high school at all, or do you do anything there, or?
Peer network right now is not allowed to do any, I'm not allowed to do anybody under eighteen. But that is, eventually, I'm hearing down the pipe that there will be peers there. But right now, this is just starting out and it's adults only. So any, any child I get, I take the parent. But then I refer out the child to either Teresa or Jennifer Beatty in town or wherever. And that has happened on a vacation, which is, and everything has turned out just, you know, we just kind of co-work with each other.
Will still continue to receive support from your organization in Livingston, is that right? Or we don't?
I think that they're gonna be, I think they're transitioning more, more consulting than the training component of. Sounds like they want to get away from grant. They want to focus on training peer-to-piers and that's about the extent of what they want to do. Which is, you know, I can understand as well. But I don't know if there's that many, I think they're really trying to get their peer-to-peer, train peer-to-peer specialists, numbers up around the state, especially when you start talking about, well, I'm gonna use the word rural Montana, which is silly because the federal level, the entire state's rural.
They just consider us frontier.
Yeah, yeah, frontier, yeah, frontier. And so when you start, and you start looking at some of, you know, part of that House six sixty grant deals with tribal, tribal, the tribes and then the, and then smaller jurisdictions. You start looking in the eastern Montana, their resources, the closest one is, is gonna be a billing. And so I think that's where, you know, there, they need to focus on peer-to-peer to get something because those guys traveling, if you're in Sidney, Montana, and you have to go to Warner Springs, that's a two-day event for, for those guys to get over there. So they need to get something in place there as well. But I think that just having this already on the ground, I think that we stand a pretty good chance. There's about five hundred thousand dollars in that grant to be spread out across the state. And I, I don't think that we're, we should have too many issues with trying to acquire twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars.
So one of the discussions we had was, and you mentioned it, there's some of the line items we have that we need to track it all. And I'm sure that we can sit down and work that out with, with Gabby and make sure that that's right, so. I think, so.
And I think that it's, you know, it's, you know, there's, there's some quirky things that we just need to, to work out. But it's almost, I, I look at it in the same fashion of how we do Tracy, Tracy Kiesel with the DUI Task Force and how she kind of takes care of things as well. So, you know, like during our discussion, Sheriff Gookin out of Gallatin County, his office is the oversight for CIT Montana, which is a crisis intervention training. And so he runs that out of his office, Denmatuse, he's a state coordinator for that. And he runs it out of there, so it has a home as, as well. So it's not, we're not going off the deep end here. It's just, it's, they kind of do go hand in hand. And if we're doing, if we're doing our mental health stuff right, then we have less law enforcement issues on that side of the house. And that's what I'd like to see anyways, because I don't think anybody who's in crisis needs to be sitting in the backseat of a car with handcuffs on. That's just my opinion, so.
I certainly have my support. I mean, we definitely have as much mental health support we can in our community because it's a great program. So.
I'd also like to state that I am required by the state to be certified. I am also required to do 20 continuing education units a year and to fulfill all those and things. So I have to do, I've done all those. And every one of the CEUs that I do and trainings I do, something that pertains to right here what we need. So I'm always on paying attention, always up on things too. So that is also the requirements that are for peer support. I'm not just, here I am, you know. I also have to be through the state and I am watched by the state.
Okay. Well, thanks Melinda for your.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking us on.
Yeah, it's important.
Yep.
Do I have a comment?
You got to come to the podium.
I have to come to the podium. I know. I mean, it's the hard stuff. Some of you know who I am. I'm Michael Stevenson. I'm a retired LCSW. I've been involved with the Broadwater County Mental Health Local Advisory Council for eight years now. And I just want to say we're very much in support of the peer program here. I've worked with mental health. I've worked trying to get services for this county for the past eight years. And what I see with Melinda and what I see with the peer counselors is something that I think is really important. And I would encourage the commissioners to go on to the local sites with the Montana Board of Crime Control and go with DHHSP. Our county is a little frightening. Montana ranks second in the country for suicides. We only follow Alaska. And in our county, we have 6.13 physical partner assaults per thousand families. I think our county has a need. And I see Melinda working with Wynn as being able to help in family situations, being able to circumvent, having to do what he's talking about with going through commitments, having to have officers tied up going to Warren Springs. I used to work at Warren Springs and we got the commitments. But anyway, I just want to say we're really in support of this and I would appreciate your support of the program. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you.
Yes, Tim.
Tim, I'm a adult citizen. Been following what's going on here in Broadwater County for a long time. Been part of the process here where Melinda has come a really a long ways. I'm stepping up here right now just to compliment this commission for bringing this out. Because I've said as a citizen here many, many, many times, that transparency is the key to public trust. And one of the things that we have had experience here in Broadwater County is that lack of transparency of what's going on has caused a lot of problems over the years. And I'm hoping that we can continue gaining on this. I just want to share, in case you haven't seen it, on this same subject, the legislature and the governor went against the people's vote last year with Medicaid expansion. We have another situation right now. Just this last week, a youth mental health counselor faces 15 counts related to Medicaid fraud. When we have these kinds of things happening in the state of Montana, we need to be vigilant in maintaining transparency to maintain that public trust. And I commend you two for doing your best to make that happen. And I will continue doing my best as a citizen to help share that with the people of Broadwater County and the state of Montana. Thank you. And I'll give you a copy of this in case you want to have seen it.
So I guess just to kind of wrap it up, I don't know what you guys want to do. I mean, I, I guess I feel, this is how I feel about this. And I, is that if we, if we can just say, I'd like to see some sort of funding on an annual basis. I'd be honest with you. And I think that, you know, with, with some of the things we have going on, I think this is, this is a good investment for our community. I mean, we, we dump a lot of money into a lot of things. And sometimes what we get back is not exactly what we, we had when we put that money out there. And I think this is something that with a year of a grant and if you look, I think there's 84 different people in her survey information that, that responded to those questions. Eighty-four people's lives have been affected. And I think that's a good part. So I would ask that, that you guys do some sort of funding commitment towards peer-to-peer and the mental health component.
Well, I think, for me, I, I think you can go ahead and tell your grant writer to go ahead and proceed, knowing that you have our support one way or another. Okay?
Okay. We can, will you do that?
Yes.
Perfect. She'll get on that and I bet in the next four minutes. Anything else, Melinda?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would like to reinforce Commissioner Foerzant Opper that I'm in complete support of this and I think it's a great program. Anything that we can do, you know, it's, it's not only saving the county money through the GTEZU, but it's putting these people's lives back together for them. And I really, I appreciate the work you put in there. I know it's, it's not an easy job and the time you spend is probably not, the money that you get paid is not anywhere equal to the time and the effort that you spend on your job. And I appreciate that. So we will.
It's a passion. So I do get blessed in different ways.
Yes. Thank you very much. And we will.
I guess do we need to make a motion to continue to fund this in regards to the grant outcome?
I think we'll just put it on our agenda probably for, you can, guys give us an idea when you think this grant is going to be available. And then your funding runs out at the end of the year. Is that right, Melinda?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so we'll make a decision by then to either continue to fund it, I guess, or hopefully they grant. So we're at that process.
Our goal is, is to have Dan write that grant. I don't, I don't think it's going to be that complicated. I guess I need to probably look at it. But what I think is complicated, Dan, Ben Grants is, the grant writer probably goes, oh, it's a piece of cake. It's not a big deal. So, you know, that in and of itself. But those funds, if I remember correctly, they become open January 1st. So that's the, the big thing is if we can get a grant submitted, they'll get it. And there's no missing language where they're going through and approving you. So I don't know if it's a one-on, if it's just as they come in and they're, they're looked at and decided upon, or if it's where they have a monthly meeting and they sit down and, and decide from there. I am not real completely sure. But they are, they did say in one of the emails that that money is going to be offered out starting January 1st. So.
And Wynn, do you want to work with Debbie on, do you have those line items there?
I do. I do.
And then see if you can kind of sort out how it's going to be tracked.
Yep. And I think that what we might have to do is we might just have to, in regards to her pay, she does get paid for a time up to 15 hours a week, I think is what it is or something of that nature. It might be we just, you know, we'll just have to do a timesheet and I'll just sign off on it and send it over. That's probably the easiest way, if that works. So, you know, it's funny, she, you know, it used to be to try and get her through the door of my office. It was almost like Congress. Now she's, she comes right up the stairs with a smile on her face. So I think it's good. All right?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. The next thing we got, because I'm on your agenda again, is the mobile repeater. And obviously when we had our search and rescue mission up in the big belts, we lost hunger. We had some issues with the, this one's for you more as well. And we'll pull this for you. So you got them as well. It was, we're trying to get the repeaters to work. We do have any communications. And so Ed, Ed and Mike found us the other ones. We couldn't get them to work. But I guess Mike Staff has looked at them and said that we can, we can get them to work. But under the recommendation of Mike Staff, he used to work in communications for the state of Montana. He's like, I suggest you still go with this new repeater system as well. So it's, it's an updated technology. This is a quote on a, on a Daniel's repeater with a mast. One of our, it comes with, the quote's for a 10-meter mast, which is 33, 34 feet. I asked for a smaller one, a seven meter. But part of this grant, or this, this quote is also, it's got a solar panel backup and it's got a battery and a case and all this jazz. And everything's in waterproof cases. So you can stuff it on top of a mountain if you're running a multi-day search or an incident and the weather's not going to get to it. And then it has, it has a charging package to go with it. So it's 21,541, 42. And like I said, that is with the seven, or the 10-foot, or 10-meter mast. Does not include the antenna, which we can get from Charlie at a different price. But I did reach out to the 911 folks and they said, absolutely, this is under, this falls under the 911 funds that can be utilized for this. But under the procurement agreement with the county, anything over 5,000 has to have your blessing. And obviously we're over $5,000. So understanding that I have control over the 911 funds, I still want to make sure that I have the blessing from, from you guys to make sure I can proceed forward with this and get this set up and, and get it running. So we have, as we're getting close to general rifle season, we always have issues. And I'd like to be able to get this going and get it in place fairly quickly in case we have any incidents that do require our search and rescue folks.
So that's something they can do for you pretty quick, huh?
I believe so.
So see, this just comes loaded with two frequencies right now? Is that right?
There's a repeating, there's a, there's a receiving and transmitting. Yep. So.
Could it be loaded up? Say we had another event, can you, how many can you repeat out of this?
Well, so you have to change.
Crystals.
Well, it's not a crystal. It's a perplexor or something like that. But you can, you can switch them out. Charlie, Charlie Gilmore is the, is Lewis and Clark County's radio guy. So I reached out to him after that. And he's the one that runs a master site for our digital trunking system, communication systems for, for up here in Helena. And that's, that master site is a master site for the entire state. So Charlie's pretty savvy. So he, I said, what do you guys use and how well does it work? And he, they use this one for, their, the system he has, which is the same as this, they now use it for search and rescue, but he's also used it for narcotics investigations that have gone, where people are doing drug buys out in that, out in rural part of Lewis and Clark County. And there's no cell service, or there's no radio service. So it can be utilized in, in a couple of different components there. But right now, the main focus point is just that we want to be able to stuff it on top of the mountain and communicate both ways. So kind of where we're at. And they come in a, in like a Pelican case. And so the plug-in's on the outside of the case, like I said, so you can stuff it out there. And he's actually used this system in some of his normal everyday applications. It's, it's not just for special, special times.
Charlie, is, is everything on here readily available, Wynn, as far as?
I believe it's.
In supply, we can get it fairly quickly?
I believe we can. They offered me another one. There was another one, it's a smaller system. It's called the Go Box. And he's just sent me the quote on that this morning. How's, not even including the solar panel. It was 26,793. And I was like, yeah, you know, I thank you, but no. And so this is just updated technology and it's where we're at.
I would imagine this shouldn't be too tough to, to set up. I mean, for a lot of creating involved, by setting up the mast, why would we look up this one?
I, you know, probably, it depends on, you know, the problem, the seating part of Baldi and Edith is the wind.
Yeah.
And, you know, it makes, it's a nightmare to get, when you have a helicopter up there. In that particular search up here, what, back in August, Deputy Carousel, who's an Iraqi, Afghanistan combat vet, who's been in a helicopter many times, he says, that was the scariest flight of my life, being up there in that wind and getting tossed around trying to, to find that gal. So that's a, that'll be the interesting part is trying to get that up on top of the hill. Because usually you said just have the helicopter drop you off and set it up fairly quick and go on your way. But I don't know, how many, how many pilots want to get up, get up on that top, be honest with you. So we'll see if it might be something we have to do something different with. But, yeah.
All right. So I'd like to motion to go ahead and approve the purchase of the portable repeater.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wynn.
Thank you. I'll give that handle today. Before I leave, I've been asked by Sheriff Gookin to kind of be a sounding board, I guess. So I will be, I'll be in and out of the office this week. I'll be in most of that bit. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Wynn. So we have minutes from October 11th and October 15th to approve?
We'll approve these minutes from October 11th and October 15th.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same. Motion carries.
How about the other?
2,793 and 3 cents.
Make a motion to approve, save them, set them up.
All second motion. All in favor? Pose same. Motion carries. Have a letter from the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue has entered into a settlement agreement with Blackfoot Communication. It resolves simply assessed property tax for the year 2019. Under the terms of the agreement, the market value for tax year 2019 has been reduced by 9%.
Does that reduction have any impact on revenue of the county?
I would imagine it would. Sure. Be nice if we got one letter saying we got 9% for the citizens, but that's not, probably not going to happen. I got a letter here from the Three Forks Rural Fire District and the Secretary of the Three Forks Rural Fire District. The Three Forks Rural Fire Board has been informed and deserved that there is only one access for emergency services at Mountain Vista subdivision located in Broadwater County due to a road closure. The subdivision is approved by Broadwater County. It's required to have two accesses for safety issue. The lack of a second access prompts a serious safety issue for our firemen and residents at the subdivision. The Three Forks Rural Fire Board is in agreement that for safety reasons, the instant commander or truck boss will determine if it in fact is safe to enter and engage in incident in Mountain Vista subdivision. Our representative of Three Forks Fire Board has verbally informed the Broadwater Commission of this safety concern in a public meeting and this letter will serve as written notification. Three Forks Rural Fire Board announced, requested Broadwater, Broadwater Commission promptly address this issue with the appropriate parties to correct this issue. Thank you, Three Forks Rural Fire. Have a test kits for asbestos mold, lead, radon gas, meth, allergens, nicotine smoke, bed bug tests, marijuana smoke contamination, fire and smoke damage kit, remiculite attic insulation test kit, Lyme disease, drinking water test kit. HIPAA compliance 2020 for health. HIPAA compliance twenty-twenty for healthcare professionals. Let's see, Commissioners' update, I attended the Weed Board, Board of Health, and the Townsend Health System Hospital District Board, which is Billings Clinic, as well as an Opportunity Bank walkthrough. That is it.
All right, I attended Board of Health meeting, we did interviews for Kirk Accord and Finance Assistant, attended the Mayor's prayer breakfast, and also had an opportunity to meet with Gilda Clancy, who is Senator Dane's field representative, talk about issues here in our county. And the thing that I wanted to pass on is, and I'll give this to you, or anybody that wants it, is Senator Dane's fight to lower prescription drug costs, as we all know, that's getting out of hand, so.
Thank you.
If there's any other business to come before the commission, we will adjourn at eleven thirteen.
Quick question before you adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's, I already said it.
Too late.
Yes, just real quick, I, I also attended the Townsend Joint District meeting, and one of the questions that has been ongoing, and I'm on behalf of the news here on this particular, one of the questions that's been ongoing with the takeover of the hospital by Billings Clinic, and the potential creation of a, of a clinic by St. Pete's coming into Townsend, one of the questions that's been repeatedly asked is what's going on with the hospital district since they are selling out, and won't have any assets to speak of left with that district? And we have been told, citizens and, and other sources, that the district will stay in function because it's too hard to create a new district. It takes a lot of time to create a district and a lot of process, and so the district will be kept in place. The question that keeps being asked is, with two separate medical facilities coming into Townsend, will the hospital district, and I should, I, you know, I've tried to ask that question of the district, but haven't been able to get that answer. I asking you folks, so maybe you can help get the answer, where will the taxes that are already part, I know there's a levy that can be increasing that funding, but there's all, there's a standard fixed funding that goes into the district from the district citizens and no taxpayer. So where will that funding for those taxes be allocated? Are they going to be in competition for two different entities? Are they already earmarked for where they're going to go? How is that going to be handled? And that's, again, that's part of the, the question that people are continually asking, going, where is that funding at, where is it going to be tomorrow? And, and that way, we can get that answer up to the people better. Thank you. If you can maybe answer that, I don't know, or maybe look into it for us.
I would, well, the, the district still has asset, the ambulance building, and until that's cleaned up, that would still be, that, that would be an asset for, for the district, even though Billings Clinic does have a first option to purchase that property, when it, when and if it's cleaned up.
As, as a citizen following that, and following that, that is far from an asset, because it's already been declared as basically as an asset.
No, I mean, once, once it's cleaned up, though, they, that, that vacant lot would be an asset.
I see, okay.
Would be their asset. And the other, and the other part is, I would, I'm not real sure where tho, those mills would go to, but I think that some of that would be, could be, and may be used for the ambulance storage that we, that we provide to the hospital, plus may be used for future reimbursement for ambulances. I guess that's a decision we'll have to take a look at where, where that can legally go to, or if it's just, because I think you would want to maintain at least a minimal funding for that function to stay in place. Legally, I really don't know what the, what the ramifications.
Okay, certainly, respectfully, thank you for, for, you know, sharing me out on that, because that's been a question that a lot of people have been asking, is where will that be at tomorrow? Because that is a tax that's on the citizens of that district, and they want to know where that money's gonna be spent, and.
Yeah. Here's the other thing I think of, and I don't really know exactly where this all goes and how this works, but there could possibly be some grants that come down the road that would be, you'd need the district to have a place to administer them, grants, see what I'm saying? If there's a grant for the hospital or something that we could do with our community, I think you'd still want the district around too.
And you understand that's how that system has worked in the past, because they're the, they're the legislating taxing authority that has the ability to go after those grants. And so it's just, it's just a big question of where, what level of involvement will the district be now with the major ownership changing hands and the operation changing hands?
Sure.
So, again, I, I thank you for indulging me on the question, a lot of people are asking it, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
I know we're done, but may I ask one more question? In that same light?
Sure.
Who owns the dirt that the hospital sits on, and who owns the dirt where the ambulance building is? That's another question that's coming up.
The district still owns the ambulance building.
And it owns the ground that it's sitting on?
And it owns the ground that it's sitting on.
Okay. What about the hospital?
The hospital is, I believe the hospital is transferred to Billings Clinic, and then they're paying off the warrants.
So that ground will become Billings Clinic ground?
Yes.
Okay. People are asking, just asking.
I'm gonna bring dirt from Billings.
Gotta bring dirt from Billings, by ambulance. Thank you.
Ouch. Now, if there's no any, any other comments? Okay, we will adjourn at eleven eighteen.